We're going to get started in a minute, but this is just a reminder that if you want to make assistance come up, the cards are due before the meeting starts. If anybody wanted to do that. Is everybody ready? Welcome to our meeting. It's our regularly scheduled meeting for January 11th, the first one of the new year. I'm Patti McCoy. Thank you so much for being here with us. We really appreciate this. We'd also like to welcome anyone who watches us at a later time. We're going to have our members introduce themselves. We will start with Mr. Christensen.
Hi, good evening. Lauren Christensen here, welcome.
Good evening, Patrick Kehoe. Thanks for coming out tonight.
Good evening, Doug Brooks. Thanks for coming out. Good evening, Sean Wilson.
Good evening, Liranda Chastain, and welcome.
Thank you so much. Now we'll have Superintendent Merritt introduce herself and her staff.
Good evening and welcome. I'd like to begin by introducing and just applauding Diane Robertson. We are so happy to have her back healthy. She's been here every single day. I appreciate you. Good to see you. And I would like to ask the remaining members of our staff to introduce themselves, beginning with Mr. Brandon.
Good evening, everyone. Nick Brandon, Executive Director, Communications and Marketing. Welcome.
Good evening, Kurt Tiswitz, Executive Director of Student Services.
Hi, I'm Debbie Piaz. I'm the Chief Finance and Operations Officer. Welcome.
Good evening, Beth Rail, Chief Economic Officer. Thank you for being here.
Welcome, Liz Fartanian-Gibbs, Human Resources.
All right, we will stand and have the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we are on letter A, which is adoption of the agenda, and approval of the consent agenda. And we need to first amend the agenda.
Madam President, I move that we amend our consent agenda, or I'm sorry, we amend our agenda to remove items, action items in finance and operations, I'm sorry, not action items, the bid packages for HS1, HS2 in the bid pack, including the action item 220133, and the, that's it. So the first three items listed under finance and operations would be removed from this meeting's agenda.
Okay. Can I get a second on that?
Second.
All right. And this would be action item. 220133. Thank you.
That's the one we're removing.
Oh, that's, no. Yeah.
We're looking for a new action item.
We'd be a new one, so it'd be.
So 220134.
Okay, 220134. Okay?
I think it just creates confusion for the future. So you're saying you're removing 33 and your new action item is 33.
33 is. All right, all in favor say yes. Yes. Any opposed say no? All right. So now we will look to adopt the agenda and approve the consent agenda, which is action item as amended. We're going to adopt the agenda and approve the consent agenda as has been amended. Action item 220130.
Madam President, I move that we adopt the agenda and approve the consent agenda as amended. Action item 220130.
Thank you. I'm looking for a second.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Member Kehoe and seconded by Member Christensen that we adapt the amended agenda and approve the consent agenda. Superintendent Merritt?
Yes, this evening our consent agenda consists of human resources transactions, since we were last together. We have new hires, resolution for a computer technician. We also have leaves, resignations, and retirements for your consideration this evening. We have tenure recommendations, as well as the approval of minutes from our regular meeting on December the 7th, 2021, our special meeting on December 15th, 2021. And finally, we have the first reading of the following policies. Policy 1422, non-discrimination and equal employment opportunity. Policy 1623, Section 504 ADA prohibition against disability discrimination in employment. Policy 1662, anti-harassment. And Policy 2700, PA 25 Annual Report.
Thank you. All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed say no? All right. Dr. Fartanian-Gibbs.
Thank you, President McCoy. Good evening. First, I would like to welcome all of our new hires to the district. So if you are one of the new staff members we are hiring this evening, if you could come on out to the front. You can.
Okay, great.
You can look at Alamos. I just have to say this too, and then you can turn around too. Okay, great. So first of all, I would like to welcome Jennifer Beans. Jennifer is our new ELL teacher at Salem High School. She comes to us with a bachelor's degree from University of Michigan, a master's degree from Mary Grove College, and five years of experience from Bloomfield Hills District. Linda Bullis. Linda is our new teacher at Canton High School. She will be working in the self-contained room with students with cognitive impairments. And she comes to us with a bachelor's degree from Eastern Michigan University. Stephanie Depp-Barn is our new teacher, elementary music teacher. We've been waiting for you for months. So glad you're here. She's going to be at Halsing and Byrd School. She has a bachelor's degree from Eastern Michigan University, as well as over five years of experience. Lauren Pennington. Lauren is our new counselor at Canton High School. She served as the intern in a position at Canton High School, then a substitute teacher, and now she's officially hired. She has a bachelor's degree from Central Michigan University, a master's degree from Eastern Michigan University, and her master's plus 30 from Eastern Michigan University. Matthew Shepard. Matthew is a new counselor at Salem High School. Bachelor's degree from University of Michigan, a master's degree from New York University, over eight years of experience. And he also served and helped us out as a substitute counselor. Now we have Jason Weins. Jason has a bachelor's degree from Western Michigan University, a master's degree from Eastern Michigan University, a master's plus 30 from the University of Michigan. He will be teaching social studies at West Middle School. He comes to us with four years of experience from Wayne Westland Schools, and about three years of experience from Istanbul, Turkey. I'm going to try to pronounce the school. Is it Shiskli-Turaki?
Perfect.
All right. And I heard no one pronounces your last name correctly.
You did amazing.
Okay. We've got more, though. Hold on. Aliyah Ish. Hi, Aliyah. She is going to be our new English Language Development Teacher at Dotson School. Welcome. Bachelor's degree from Al Najja University, Palestine, a master's degree from Wayne State University, and over 14 years of experience. And it's so nice to meet all of you. I've talked to you all on the phone. It's nice to see you in person. So these are all of our teachers we are hiring. So congratulations to all of you. Stay here for one more minute, because I would like to now introduce you to Mr. Wasim Hamun. Wasim is joining us again. He used to work in our district as a computer technician. And since he's left us, he has been working as a creative director, a marketing manager, a digit marketing specialist. He has his bachelor's degree from Wayne State University, and he is completing his master's degree of business administration right now at the Mike Illich School of Business. And he is coming back to work with us again. Thank you for returning as a computer technician. Welcome back. So I just want to say thank you for choosing Plymouth Canton Community Schools. We are so fortunate that all of you will be working with our students. And just remember, always to be champions for kids. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, I'm moving on. First, I would like to congratulate Nancy, not Nancy Lee, I've held as Patricia Haywood, our payroll coordinator from Debbie's Department. She is retiring after 15 years in the district, and we are very thankful we had her here in the payroll department. And congratulations on your retirement. Now, after five years of successful teaching, you get to receive tenure. And I'm going to introduce some teachers this evening. And if you're here, please stand up when I say your name. Corey Hine. Okay, well, I'm going to tell you a little bit about Corey. She is the EL teacher at West Middle School. And this is what Clint Smiley has to say about her, who's the principal at West. West Middle School recommends Corey Hine for tenure. Corey Hine is the EL teacher at West and serves as a role model, mentor, confidant and teacher to the students on her caseload. Corey co-teaches with staff members from each of the grade levels at West Middle School, and she teaches one section of language arts. In addition, Corey supports students at West as a club sponsor and advocate. Corey is up for tenure in January 2022, and based on her continued performance, she is recommended for this distinction. Congratulations. Mary Weiser-Wall. Mary is an art teacher in our district at the elementary level, and this is what Jennifer Chambers would like to share about Mary, who is the principal at Halsing School. I'm happy to recommend Mary Wall for tenure in Plymouth Canton. Mary is passionate about teaching art at Halsing School. She works well with students, families, and staff. Mary is flexible and willing to help wherever needed. Students enjoy her class. We are fortunate to have her on the Halsing team. Congratulations, Mary. Mike Wells. Mike's here. So Mike Wells is receiving tenure this evening, and he is the band director, as well as a music teacher here in our district. And this is what Sherri Stuckel, the principal at Plymouth High School, is sharing about Mike Wells. Mike Wells spent the first five years of his teaching career at Plymouth High School as an instructor in the music department. He was hired as an assistant director and transitioned into the role of Director of Bands in 2018. He is highly organized, and he's an excellent communicator and a tireless advocate for kids. Mike is passionate about creating meaningful experiences for our students and works collaboratively to ensure they still have opportunities to showcase their talent and compete at the state and national level, even during the COVID-19 pandemic. Without a doubt, he is a tremendous asset to Plymouth High School, Piceup, and Plymouth Canton Community Schools. Congratulations, Mike. Megan DeBroom. Megan is a teacher from Dotson School, and she currently teaches in the ASD classroom at Dotson. And here's what Dr. Quazirano has to share about Megan. Megan began her teaching career in 2008 as a general education teacher, but quickly realized her passion was for special education. After four years, she made the switch and became a center-based classroom teacher for students with autism. Students with autism benefit from educators who are patient, positive, flexible, empathetic, all of which are qualities Megan possesses. She is a true gift to the students lucky enough to be in her classroom. So congratulations, Megan, Corinne, Mary, Mike, and Megan for receiving tenure this evening.
All right, thank you very much. Very exciting. And next up is celebrating success. And I'm doing it tonight. One of my very favorite parts of this entire meeting. Celebrating success. All right, so tonight, celebrating success this evening, we'll honor PCCS music students for their outstanding accomplishment during the past several weeks. Led by our wonderful, talented music teachers, PCCS continues to shine at the state, national, and even world stage when it comes to the sweet sounds that come from the student musicians. Each year, the Michigan School Band and Orchestra Association selects top and middle one high school musicians in the state of Michigan through a rigorous audition process to perform as part of the prestigious All-State Bands. This year, the district is honored to have five students receive the award. PCEP students Charlotte Pavlik, Ava Galidi, Thomas Borst, Nathan Eisberry, and Pioneer Middle School student Cole Payton. Come on up. So they want some pictures. The PCEP marching band competes in a highly successful season this fall, earning numerous awards at competitions, including second place and the award for Best Visual Performance at the State Champions at Ford Field this past November. We would like to honor the drum majors for this year. PCEP marching band Sidney Draper and Arianna Peterson, our drum majors. There's the band, ma'am. Drum majors are important leadership positions that are crucial to the organization, efficiency, and quality of the marching band, both during and outside the rehearsal and performances. PCCS was thrilled to be represented on the national stage recently during the 2022 Rose Bowl festivities in Pasadena, California. PCEP student and color guard member Olivia Pentany, thank you, was selected as one of the 320 students nationwide to receive a spot in the Bands of America Honors Band, which performed during the famous Rose Parade. This band consisted of students from across the country. Tonight, we would like to honor these amazing students for all they have accomplished so far this school year. PCCS is so proud to be represented by these skilled student musicians. I would like to have Mike Wells, Director of PCE Bands, come up to the podium to share about the accomplishments of tonight's guests, as well as all of our music students.
Thank you, everyone. I'll be very brief. It's not about me, it's about the students. You know, we are obviously in a day and age where social-emotional learning is extremely important, and I think that, you know, there's no better example, you know, of that learning than there is in the music classroom, and specifically in the performing arts. We have a huge advantage of working with students that are absolutely incredible. We also have the advantage of being able to build those relationships with students over sometimes a course of seven or eight years. A lot of these students I've known for multiple years. Some of the students I've known for as long as I've been here. So it's an absolutely incredible thing, and it's a very powerful, you know, amazing opportunity for these students to experience a connection with teachers, you know, people that care about them deeply. And we have an incredible staff that really supports these students and really wants to see them succeed. And we're lucky that we get to be a part of that journey. So it's all about students. It's really not me. It's about the work that they put in and the effort they put in. I'm just there to help facilitate, and I love my job, and I love being here. They are absolutely incredible, and we're very, very proud of them, and we're looking forward to, you know, amazing performances and what they do in the future. So thank you so much for recognizing that.
And thank you. Also, Mike Wells was a member of the marching band when he was at high school. Just throw that out there for you. Thank you. On behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to present Charlotte Pavlik. Mr. Brandon has the awards. Ava Galidi, Thomas Borst, Nathan Eisberry, Cole Payton, Olivia Pentany, Sidney Draper, and Arianna Peterson, with Stars Awards for Students with Tenacity Achieving and Reaching Success. Thank you so much. And I believe we do have somebody that wanted to say a few words. Arianna?
On behalf of everyone, I would like to thank the board and its administration for all the support we received this season. We were able to have a really successful return to competition with your support, and the program is looking forward to having another great season next year.
Congratulations, and thank you so much. The music program certainly is one of the points of pride for our district, and we appreciate all of your hard work, because it is really like a second job. Thank you so much. No, they really do. In that week after school ends, and they're out there practicing from nine to five every day. All right, so now we are on to Board Committee Reports Action. First up is the President's Report. Since we have been on break, the board has not done, like, as a collective body, we haven't really, we did have a special meeting earlier this evening, and we will be back into our full range of committee work soon. Tonight, though, I would like to thank, because she is here, we'll be giving her a report for the last time, Gretchen Ward, for all the work she has done with the Educational Excellence Foundation over the years. They do great work as a body, and her leadership has really been important. Big shoes to fill, and we so appreciate that. We also look forward to still seeing her at the events, like the wine tasting that will be coming up, and you'll be able to really just enjoy it, which I'm sure you've never done. And also take this opportunity to thank the entire staff of the district for all this hard work. I'm pretty sure that nobody expected this pandemic to be going on this long, and for all the changes you've had to make to adapt and take care of our students. And we really do, as a board, we really do appreciate the hard work and the dedication of the entire staff of the district. So thank you very much. Next up is Student Performance and Achievement. That is Members Sedu, who is not able to be here tonight. Their next meeting is tomorrow at 5:00. And here, right here. Did anybody else from that committee have anything for that?
We haven't met since the last meeting, and so tomorrow we're going to meet, and we're going to talk about some course proposals and update on early middle college. So anybody's welcome to attend.
Oh, very exciting. And that will be here at 5:00. Next up is the Policy Committee. We have not met since our last board meeting. Our next meeting is January 25th, which is our next regular board meeting at 5:30. We will be meeting in the collaboration space, which, if you go down this hall and you just keep going, you'll run into it. And that will be at 5:30. Then we have Finance and Operations Committee with Member Kehoe.
We have met. We met last Thursday here in this room, and we discussed the, some of the construction projects that we have going on at the high school. We discussed the financial statements for the month ending November 30th, and we discussed the key performance indicators for the custodial process, which we'll be hearing in the presentation this evening about. Our next FNO meeting is Thursday, January 20th, again here in this room, and we welcome the community to attend. That's at 5:00 p.m.
All right. And then the next one is Legislative Action. Do you have anything, Ms. Chastain?
We do not have anything to report. We have not met. However, there is a draft charter. We are looking for community members soon, and as soon as those committee dates are set, we will make those public, and we invite all those to participate. Thank you.
And then the last we have on peer for committee reports is Educational Excellence Foundation with Gretchen Ward.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you for the kind words, President McCoy. It's definitely been my pleasure to serve in this role over the last seven years. So this is my last board report. My last day with the foundation is going to be this Friday, so a little bittersweet here tonight. But, and I appreciate, I should say, I do appreciate the board giving me a platform to not only share our story with the foundation, with you, but also with the community members that are watching at home. I definitely appreciate the time and dedication that you've given to the foundation. So just before the break, I had the privilege of letting 41 teachers throughout PCCS know that their classroom grant application had been approved. We awarded just over $33,000 to classrooms this past December. And I will say, it seemed like a pretty normal cycle. You know, we put the application out, teachers apply, our committee reviews them, we award money. This year, some seemed different. The requests that we received from teachers just felt different. They felt maybe a little more heartfelt, a little more, a little more passionate about why these materials were needed. And so I just want to share with you a couple of the things that we funded, and just to give you a little bit of that perspective. One of the examples is Alexa Lalagini. She's the new media specialist at Pioneer. She did an inventory of her collection and found that only eight titles featured main characters with Muslim, with Muslim as main characters. And so her quote, which I love, said, "This is unacceptable. My goal is that our library is a place where students can find themselves in books." So she now has $1,500 to make that happen. Another, and we received over half, just about half, I should say, of our requests this year that we funded were for books. And these were books for diverse reading materials, books for leveled learning libraries, classroom libraries, and really just were more heartfelt about why they needed these books. An example I'd like to share is from, let's see, this one is from Heather Rualla from Byrd. She says, and I quote, "I'm a reading interventionist teacher, and I teach many young children and have those in need, especially those in first and third grades who are struggling with reading due to COVID restrictions and not having a normal year. The district has graciously provided many online resources to help with reading, but the students who struggle need books they can take home, books they can hold and touch with real words. These funds will go to purchase many books as possible for students struggling with reading and finding books to match their reading level. In addition, many of these books I have selected include multicultural characters or families, so children can see pictures of people in books who look like themselves. This is why I'm calling this program 'See Yourself in a Great Book.'" So this, another $1,500 that she's going to be able to provide for the books that she needs. Now, not all of the requests were about books. We were able to provide a drum sander for the East Middle School STEM program. We were able to provide standing mobile carts so that counselors at Salem High School can be in the hallways during passing times, so that if students need their support or their resources, they're available and accessible. So I also have to mention that it wasn't the applications that looked a little different this year, it was also the responses from teachers, like Megan Fielder, who said, "Hi, Gretchen, thank you so much for the wonderful news. I'm so excited about this opportunity. I can't wait to get these resources in my classroom and start using them ASAP." Or this one, this one gets me a little bit. This is our friend Stacy Kokalas. She's the ASD teacher over at Ferent, and she says, "Yay," three exclamation points. "Thank you so much. It's nice to have something to celebrate after last week's devastating news." So these awards went out a week after Oxford happened, and she, three exclamation point, and was celebrating about $103. That's all it was. She wanted to build a sensory path for her classroom, but this is what turned her day around and hopefully ended her year on a positive note. So I share these stories because I don't mean to tell you that teachers are struggling out there, but these little wins that the foundation and PTOs and boosters are able to provide give me chills and make all the difference in these teachers' days. So when we really get down to that level, $103 makes a huge difference. Now, that $103 or any of these grants wouldn't have been able to be provided if it wasn't for the generosity of our community. So if I've worked with you or you've worked with me on volunteering on our board, supporting our events. on volunteering on our board, supporting our events, making a donation, please know that you are a part of every one of these grants, and I appreciate it from the bottom of my soul. And I believe it was Walt Disney who said, I love this quote, "You can create, design, and build the most wonderful buildings, but it's the people inside that make the dream a reality." So, on behalf of the foundation and on behalf of me personally, I want to thank all the teachers and staff throughout PCCS, because it's been a true pleasure to help supporting, making their dreams a reality. So, I thank you for your time, for all of your support over the years, and I'm a PCCS parent for four, five, six more years, so I'm going to be around. It's truly been a pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So, now we are at D, which is Administrative Reports and Recommendations, and first up is the Superintendent's Report with Superintendent Merrick.
Thank you, President McCoy. Now, you just talked about not too long ago, your favorite part of the evening is celebrating success, when you take the opportunity as a school board to recognize the accomplishments of our amazing students, our staff, and members of our community. But tonight, we want to celebrate you and thank you. As we look to January as being School Board Recognition Month, PCCS, our entire school community joins me this evening to thank you, as well as the over 550 school districts across the state of Michigan, Michigan, for your passionate dedication to our students and to public education. We thank you so much. This entire school community, again, is just thankful to you for everything that you do to contribute to the educational experience of our students. But I have to say, in particularly, this year and last year have been years that none of us could have imagined navigating, and you have navigated us through a pandemic that continues to occur, probably one of the most divisive times in our community, but you stayed together with your strong advocacy for what's best for students and our staff, and we appreciate you for that. In the middle of a pandemic, we've had to navigate through what recently happened at Oxford and the impact within our own schools, and you've really showed some strong leadership in that space, and we appreciate you for that as well. On top of that, our staffing shortages, our transportation, so I'm sure it's probably not very often lately that you are getting emails of thanks, but I want to represent this entire district and thank you this evening for your dedication and your long hours. Last year, I think we were well over 50 meetings, and you didn't initially think you were signing up for that, but you stand, stood up, and you answered the call. So, we thank you. We are celebrating you this entire month of January. So, this evening, we're just giving you a little certificate, a little gift here, and I'd like to share with you, at the meeting, at December meeting of Wayne Risa, their Board of Education, they approved a resolution, Local School District's Board of Education Recognition Resolution. So, I'd like to ask you to just give me a little bit of patience as I read this resolution to you from our Wayne Risa School Board. Whereas the Boards of Education of the 33 constituent school districts of Wayne County promote quality education for all children attending their local schools, and whereas these committed public servants demonstrate dedication to their civic duty and voluntarily contribute countless hours of service on behalf of the students of Wayne County and their community, whereas Wayne County School Boards are strong advocates for the needs of their students in their communities and with policymakers in Lansing and Washington, and whereas Wayne County School Boards regularly do all they can to ensure academic success for all Wayne County schools, and whereas Wayne County School Boards understand the importance of a quality education for its youth and recognize that this is the most important factor in the success of our local communities, state, and country, and whereas local control continues to play a vital role in the success of public education, and whereas, especially since March 2020, where it was confirmed how important education is to all components of our society, and school boards have been under immense duress, pressure, and challenge to deliver during an unprecedented environment of a pandemic for their communities, and thus, school boards deserve special recognition for their service, and whereas the state of Michigan and the State Board of Education have declared January 2022 as School Board Recognition Month, now therefore be it resolved that the Wayne County Regional Educational Service Agency Board of Education, in the spirit of the School Board Recognition Month, recognizes, celebrates, and commends the dedication, contributions, and leadership of the Wayne County School Boards of Education. This was presented and adopted December 15th, 2021. Please, PCCS school community, join me in thanking the members of our school board. Think about our theme this year, in leaving a legacy. Last year, creating a future, as we're looking forward for our students, you really embody that path and really helping us to, to guide us and create that compass to really get there. And I can only look forward to what that future has in store for our students under your leadership. So, thank you again for your dedication to our students and our school community.
Thank you so much. So, now we are down to two, which is Teaching and Learning with Ms. Rail.
And it is my pleasure to welcome Jan Douglas, Principal of Bentley Elementary, who is here for this month's school improvement highlights. So, welcome.
Good evening. I'm Jan Douglas, Principal of Bentley, and tonight with me I have our school improvement co-chairs, Sherry Bowler, who teaches kindergarten, and Jill Wieda, who teaches fourth grade. We are pleased to be able to present to you our school improvement highlights this evening. In 2019, we revised our vision and mission statement. We currently use these statements to help guide our school improvement work, specifically in the areas of social-emotional learning, differentiation, and implementation of research-based practices. The school improvement work that we do falls under the umbrella of equity as we strive to foster a culturally responsive environment for all of our students. Currently, our focus areas include Reader's Workshop, Social-Emotional Learning, also known as SEL, and Accountable Talk.
Our first focus, Reader's Workshop. Students are instructed and guided to choose books at their reading levels based on the BAS. A reading workshop typically starts with a mini lesson to model the lesson's objective within 10 to 15 minutes. Students are then invited to read on their own and apply the skills discussed in the mini lesson. This goes on for about 20 to 30 minutes. Afterward, students engage in conversation with partners to demonstrate their understanding of the concepts and their skills.
It looks a little different in Lower L as opposed to Upper L, because students require more coaching and intentional teaching of the structure. To ensure equity of access, the media specialists have worked with the curriculum leaders to make sure there are a wide variety of fiction and nonfiction pieces so that our students can find texts that have characters they can identify with racially, ethnically, and socially.
And finally, to foster good reading habits, staff communicates high expectations for all students by challenging them to select texts that will build their skills and prepare them for to be lifelong learners and readers. Also within Reader's Workshop, Tier Two is small group instruction. Strategy or guided reading groups are held with three to four students at a time. Most groups are developed based on goals set per each student. Instruction is individualized based on student goals and monitored using running records.
Social-emotional learning. Beginning the day with SEL helps students feel that the classroom is a safe place. Lower L, weekly SEL topic stories and making connections between the topics and what they notice in stories. We have the use of a quiet corner. We also do Zen Dan mindfulness to connect with our feelings and make a more relaxed environment and bring us back to a calm way of being in a learning environment.
In Upper L, to continue with social-emotional learning, we give students a challenge to utilize the SEL in their daily lives. This can be done anytime at school or at home. Students are then given time to come to class and then share those scenarios with their peers.
Continuing on with social-emotional learning, staff chose this form for the second-step resources that guide the daily SEL lessons. The language is meant to help students acknowledge their feelings and understand how to process them in a healthy way. This poster is visible throughout the building for all Bentley students, staff, and visitors to see. It supports common language across all grade levels.
Finally, is Accountable Talk. We use Accountable Talk to ensure everyone has a voice in classroom discussions. This strategy is also used to build class consensus. Talk moves might include "Say more about that," or "Can you explain that in another way?" Additionally, we use sentence stems such as "I agree with" name the student, "because" another reason to agree, or "disagree." It is about the teacher acting as the facilitator while the students are driving the discussions.
We are currently looking forward to adding additional student leadership opportunities at Bentley as an avenue to elevate the voice and perspective of our students. We are proud, we are strong, we are Bentley. We welcome any questions or comments from the board.
Mr. Brooks, do you have anything?
It's a very good presentation, but I'm glad to see what's happening in your school. Thanks.
Ms. Chastain?
No questions, but thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Christensen?
Yeah, no questions, but thank you for the presentation.
Mr. Kehoe?
I just wanted to comment, and I appreciate the work that you do on the SEL side and then the Equity side, as well as the student leadership and student voice. Those things in particular, I think, will pay great dividends to you at Bentley and the students there. So, I'm excited to see the focus that you brought on those items.
Mr. Wilson?
So, thank you for the presentation. For the Student Council and the Equity Council, you know, do you have a story of how that's really helped to change the school culture? Or, you know, can you kind of share with us a student-led outcome that came from that?
Well, actually, these are things that we're kind of looking forward to putting into place. Student Council was something that we had pre-pandemic, and it's just been really difficult to navigate during the pandemic. So, when we get back to normal, we look forward to putting that in place. And then also, when things settle down a little bit with COVID, we're going to get back on track with our Equity Committee and make sure that we include some students, because we can only assume what their experiences are.
Well, kudos on, you know, bringing those back, and great presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. That was nice. I like to hear about what the schools do, especially making sure all of your readers have things that engage them, because that's so important to lifelong learners and readers, is if they like it, they'll read it. But thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, next up, we have Action Item 220131, which is Consider Approval of a Resolution for Course Adjustment for Two High School Social Studies Elective Courses, Honors International Relations, and Western Civilization. This is a final reading. I'm looking for a motion.
Madam President, I'd like to make the motion to consider approval of the resolution of course adjustment for two high school social studies elective courses, Honors International Relations, and Western Civilizations. Final reading, Action Item 220131.
Thank you. Can I get a second? It's been moved by Member Brooks and seconded by Member Wilson. Does anybody have any questions on this? We did go over it at the last meeting. Seeing none, I will call for the vote. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. All right. And the next thing we have is Action Item 220132, Consider Approval of Resolution for World Language Graduation Requirement Alignment with Michigan Merritt Curriculum Options. Final reading. I am looking for a motion.
Madam President, I can, I'd like to make a motion to consider approval of the resolution for World Language Graduation Requirements Alignment with the Michigan Merritt Curriculum Options. Final reading, Action Item 220132.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Member Brooks and seconded by Member Chastain, that we consider the approval of a resolution for World Language Graduation Requirement Alignment with the Michigan Merritt Curriculum. Action Item 220132, final reading. Did anybody have any questions on this? We did discuss it at our last meeting. All right, I will call for the vote. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All in, any opposed, say no. All right. We are now down to three, which is Finance and Operations. We did remove the first three items for Finance and Operations. So, we are down to, consider a resolution for electric building signs for BP EL1, Buildings Dotson, Erickson Field, and Holsing. First reading.
Good evening. Thank you very much. We are drawing a close to the EL1 buildings, and the last piece of that construction project that ensued in the 2021 year is to then select and purchase three electronic building signs for Dotson, Erickson Field, and Holsing. Those electronic building signs are similar.
Poor signs.
Poor signs, sorry. Dotson and the three triplets, I almost took all of them. Sorry. They'll be similar to, I'll call them a fireplace design, similar to what Dotson's is currently. So, brickwork to match the building, similar to what Dotson's looks like. In Holsing's case, they've never had a sign, so this will be a first install for them as well. So, the electrical, the installation, the electronics building signs are under the Sourcewell contract, and Sourcewell is a cooperative bid. That will be done under that process. And then the other pieces of the masonry, electrical, and installation are detailed in a letter that Mr. Krasinski, who unfortunately couldn't be here this evening, detailed behind the resolution. This was presented at the January 6th, 2022 Finance and Operations Committee, and if you have any questions or need any further information, I'd be happy to get that forwarded.
Does anybody have any questions about this?
We talked about it extensively at FNO, so.
Those are really nice to have those signs up in front of the school. They can be changed so quickly and easily.
Yeah, they're all, they're all can be electronically changed, so you don't even have to go off to the device. It's all wireless.
I really think it's a good look. It just seems to, when you drive by and you see them, it just is, it looks nice. It's curb appeal.
And it will be consistent with board policy, too. So, it'll have the school logo on there, as well as the Plymouth Camp Community Schools logo. So, it'll be all consistent, then.
That's very nice. All right. So, then the next one is Custodial Key Performance Indicators Presentation?
Yes. So, this evening, we have several members of the ABM Services Group, which are our contracted services provider for custodial services in district, as well as our own Rich Welch. With us this evening is Kyle Felenbaum, the Regional Vice President of Operations, Todd Fleming, the Regional Director of Operations, and Melissa Mescalio- Todd Fleming, the Regional Director of Operations, and Melissa Muscaro.
And Mascherello.
Muscaro, our account manager here locally at PCCS. They're going to give a presentation on the custodial KPIs, but they're also going to give a little bit more this time, which will include a background as to where they are in staffing. And because this is our first time through, it's a little bit longer, so I ask for your patience in the length of the presentation, but I'm sure Todd, Kyle, and Melissa will take us through as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Good evening, board. On behalf of ABM, we'd like to thank you for the partnership and the opportunity to present this evening. That'll be the next level. At ABM, we start, we start every meeting both internally and externally with a brief safety moment with our staff and our clients. Safety is paramount to ABM, and we strive to be the best in class with workplace safety. This evening's safety moment is on school building security. Do not open doors or allow unauthorized visitors in the building. Always direct visitors to the main office for entry. Keep all exterior doors closed and locked. No good contact if you encounter an unauthorized person within the building. And that's our safety moment for today. Daddy already basically introduced all of you to us, so we'll skip right by this one. Brief agenda. First, we'll go over the purpose of what we call a client business review. We'll go over some previous goals, first quarter highlights, staffing situation, then we'll give into the actual KPIs. We'll talk a little bit about the ABM way, and then we can have questions and/or discussions. So essentially, the purpose is to provide a transparent review of our operations through identified KPIs. We want to show the good, the bad, and the ugly in efforts for continuous improvement. Specifically with this review, thank you. Specifically with this review, we are reviewing the first quarter of our operation, which is September 3, November. Also, our goal with this review is to establish a KPI baseline of which we can measure our future data points against and identify immediate needs for corrective actions.
A little shorter. So we just want to go over a little bit of our staffing here. So what we have and what you'll see on there is from May until December of our applicants, our actual headcount, our turnover rate, and our FTEs that we have had throughout the months. So over this period, we've had a total of 273 candidates. Of that, we've had 85 that are hired, which is a 31% higher rate. One of the things that we do want to highlight is the turnover rate here that you see. We have only lost 13 employees during the seven-month period. And that would be a 15.3% turnover rate, where the industry standard right now in the north is 40%. So we're really happy with that number. You know, obviously, we're not where we need to be with staffing, but as far as keeping the staff that we currently have, we've done a really good job of doing that. And then what we wanted to kind of highlight too is kind of where we're at as of January. So as of January 1st, we had 75 positions filled, which is the 70.5 FTE that you see up there. We have, we had 16 in the final stages of processing, which is where they've gone through and completed their background in drug screening and moving on to the fingerprints and new hire paperwork. Which, that's actually been one of the highest numbers we've had since we've started the account. So we're really happy with where we're at and kind of where we're moving forward. And then as of today, so obviously, the numbers change daily. We have new candidates coming in, we have people who fall out, people that have started during that time. So as of today, right now, we do have 78 positions filled, which is at 73.5 FTEs. You don't see that up there. Like I said, it's forever changing. But we do have right now 73.5, and then we do have an additional two candidates already starting this week. And we anticipate an additional five candidates to start within the next 10 days. And of course, that can always change. It can go up, just depending on where people are at in the process and how quickly they can get through.
Thank you, Melissa, and good afternoon again, board. Nice to see everyone again. I'll run us through the current MOU that took place back on December 15th, when we executed our first MOU with the contract between ABM and also Plymouth Canton Community Schools. The main purpose of that MOU was to make employment with ABM a little more attractive, especially in the very, we'll call it, the minimal labor pool we have right now in a very, very challenging economy, was the main purpose. And to do this, we did substantially increase our wage rates from our contractual wage rates to both our existing staff and also any newcomers or new hires that could be coming on board. For example, our custodians, I believe, were making contractually $14.25 per hour. With this MOU, we bumped them up all the way up to $16.15 an hour. So there's a substantial increase. As a demonstration of our partnership with the district, ABM did absorb half the costs associated with this investment. We're very proud to do so. And again, to Melissa's point in earlier slide, I think the results are definitely there, and I hope that the results continue with this investment on the higher wages. In addition to the increased wages, we are providing and continue to providing the continued employee bonuses, such as the $1,000 sign-on bonus for new hires, $500 referral bonus for existing staff, and we also have $150 a month attendance bonus for those existing staff that had perfect attendance for the month. So with these actions in place, I do believe we will continue on the right path as far as staffing and getting closer and closer to that full roster that you were indeed looking for. I will now hand it over to Todd to begin the KPIs.
Alright, so the key performance indicators are pretty much based on inspections. The QA story is to inspect, not expect. We like to use our KPI data to identify any deficiencies and communicate the findings to our frontline workers through additional training. The goal here is to achieve continuous improvement, which I think you might want to talk a little bit here.
Good evening. Today, here at PCS, PCCS, we have a different, few different ways of inspecting. Our first type of inspecting is accomplished by our plant engineers every morning. They walk the buildings to make sure they're ready to go. They work together with the cleaning assistants and the ABM day staff to make sure that if there's missed tasks, that they're addressed as quickly as they can be. Later in the day, the PE sends either me and Melissa, or just myself, an email to make us aware of problems that they ran into in the morning from night before. The second type of inspections are done by myself. I'm continually walking buildings and in contact with building principals and staff that make me aware of any problems that they see. Third type is our cabinet members are also walking buildings and talking with staff about concerns surrounding cleanliness. The cabinet, and then, at different times, they feedback, send the feedback to me either by email or through our cabinet member meetings. The fourth type is ABM managers themselves, and they're always looking at buildings whenever they're walking in a building. Every time you walk in a building, you kind of look and look to see what the floors look like, to see what the walls look like, see what the glass looks like. The finally, ABM has their managers perform formal inspections through the site application to put the PANDA paper. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Todd to kind of go over what the site inspections actually are.
So ABM has a very sophisticated quality assurance, assurance software named SITE. It loads, we load the district's entire geography, which includes every building and every room, space, an area from locker rooms, restrooms, storage areas, hallways, stages. Each room and space has an area, has a specific inspection that is completed by ABM management. The inspections are performed on smart devices using a smartphone or tablet. It can be done on a computer screen as well. In addition to the management inspections, ABM's SITE software allows for joint inspections with the client if so choose. So as an example of one inspection, we could use this conference room as one. And there might be 15 to 20 points to actually inspect within this conference room. How the ceiling tiles work, are all the light bulbs good, has it been vacuumed, is the trash empty? Are the windowsills dusted, et cetera, et cetera. So that kind of brings us to the next slide and why we have so much information that we can go off of. The first quarter, we had 221 inspections done, over 3,800 lines of data, basically 85 printed pages, with an overall average of the district of 87.68. And at this point, Melissa will go through some of the hard data itself.
So what you're going to see up there is each month is going to be separated, it's going to be color-coded. So September's always going to be in blue, October's going to be in green, November's in red, and then first quarter overall is going to be in yellow as we go through the slides. So what you just see up there, like I said, is just kind of an overview of each month and kind of where it fell as far as inspections. So the next few slides, as we go over them, it's going to be kind of, you know, separated by each month and then the area and then the schools itself. So for September here, some of our highest scores that you'll see is the, you know, gym, equipment room, and cafeteria. And some of the lows were the entrance areas and classrooms. And then for buildings, some of our highest buildings that we had gotten scores out of were Isbister and Byrd, and our lows were Holstein and Allen. So same kind of slide here for October. Highest areas that we had inspected were storage areas, stairs, lobbies, libraries, entrance areas, coffee rooms, cafeterias, and some of the lows were the janitorial closet and how they were presented and stocked as well. The buildings, the highest for October were Field and Bentley. Our lowest was Discovery Middle School. And then for November, some of our highest areas were the kitchen, gyms, coffee rooms. That CPT means carpet, cafeteria, and then break room with carpet as well. Our lows were some of the coffee rooms with the hard surface or tile, and some break rooms with the hard surface as well. And then the buildings for November, the highest were West, Tanger, the maintenance building, Gallimore and Byrd again. Then the lows were Plymouth and Pioneer High School. And overall, for the first quarter there, the highest areas that were kind of already presented, you'll see again, storage areas, stairs, lobbies, cafeterias, those types of things. And then the lows were pretty consistent with the classrooms, break room with the hard surface, common areas of those sorts. And then the schools for the first quarter, you know, I've already went through these, but you can see them up there. They're just kind of all listed. Above 95% was Bentley, Byrd, Field, Gallimore, Isbister, the maintenance buildings, Salem High School, and West. And then the lows were Allen, Discovery Middle School, Holstein, Pioneer, Plymouth. It wasn't turning the pages. So this one here, it just kind of, again, goes through the months and the total number of inspections that were done those months. So what you'll see there is September, it was a very low number with 25 inspections. And during that time, we were really just getting site up and running, you know, for the district. And then also, we were pretty low as far as our management staff. And we were really just trying to get them trained on that system as they were new to the company as well. So as we've moved forward, we've increased the inspections per month. And then we'll continue to do so as we go through the next few, next few months as well. Alright, and then I'm going to turn it back over to Todd for you.
So this is kind of a how did we get there? Part of the benefit of our QA system is that it identifies the amount of formal inspections performed at each facility. Through this baseline KPI report, we realized that we were not performing enough formal inspections at certain buildings, specifically the high schools. So we're going to take this data and develop a corrective action plan to make sure formal inspections are being performed appropriately, more evenly across the district. I like to see, you know, when you have a challenged building that we're doing more inspections there, but we're, you know, we're going to look for a baseline, you know, of a certain amount of inspections per building. And this is a breakdown of number inspections per area. You can see classrooms is, you know, we've inspected the most classrooms. Behind that, you've got common areas, restrooms, entrance areas. That all, that all makes good sense, you know, from the experience I've had. That's what we should be looking at the most. So this breaks down the top 10 deficient, deficient items. I won't go through each one, but you'll see, like, the management items are a bigger piece of the pie. The maintenance items are everything, maintenance items, the maintenance items are everything from dead bugs in the lights to a chip floor tile, burned-out bulb, discolored ceiling tile, dust around the ceiling vents. If a deficiency does not fall under our scope, however, we communicate it with the district to be resolved, like a chip tile or a pencil sharpener that's not working. ABM will utilize this data as key training points with our staff and is measured on a continual basis. This chart, a little bit of an eye chart. It shows, the blue bars show the number of maintenance, the number of deficient inspections. And then the orange bar shows the average score of those inspections. And I will let Kyle finish up.
Thanks. Again, Eric Hudson's obviously couldn't make it today, so we'll pinch-hit him for him on these, on these final slides. The ABM way, top of our way is obviously our safety and our safety culture. As we mentioned earlier, safety is absolute paramount to our success from a local operation all the way through an organization. So nothing is more important to us than the safety of our staff, our clients, and also our community. We strive to be the best in class as it relates to a workplace safety program without, throughout the industry. You know, some examples of best practices that we use throughout our organization is that our staff, where we hold daily stand-down meetings prior to every shift to review potential hazards that our staff may come across during their workday. We also have weekly safety meetings. We also have monthly safety meetings, of which include assessments that our frontline workers need to complete and pass, which we have on file. Those examples and more really help us establish a think-safe culture within our organization. Again, that helps protect our staff, our clients, and also our community. Next slide, please. Alright, our strategic purpose is a new purpose, a strategic purpose for our organization, developed late last year with efforts to unlock our full potential as an integrated facility services provider. And the strategic purpose created has basically a three-pronged approach, a three-bucket approach. The first bucket, we'll call it, is to invest and also elevate in our team member experience. That's our frontline workers, our early workforce. We want to make sure we are attracting the right work staff for our organization, make sure we develop them, and also reward that staff. Secondly, we want to invest and elevate, and you, the client, make your experience better with our partnership. For example, and hopefully soon to come to fruition, we have a client portal that I think we mentioned at the FNO meeting, where you, the client, can log in. You can see real-time KPI data. You can look at past invoices. You can look at current invoices. You can look at contract documents that are specific to your account. And then third, obviously, we want, obviously, third, we want to elevate and also invest in our technology, both for our frontline workers, our staff, and also you, the client, which I just talked about. As it relates to our staff, we want to make sure we are providing them with the most innovative and most automated equipment possible to make them as productive as possible. Kind of the old cliche, but we want to make sure we're working smarter and not harder. Excellent. This is a kind of recap of the three buckets. However, the diagram on the right, that is our strategic map for elevating our team members or our frontline employees, which means, one, we want to attract the best employees possible for our operation and community. We want to engage those employees once we hire them within our operations. We want to evaluate them on a continuous basis, then develop them, and we also want to reward them, because nothing's more important than keeping our good employees. Now I'll hand it over, lastly, to Melissa for our recent successes. Now hand it over, lastly, to Melissa for our recent successes and future goals.
Just to kind of wrap it up, so over the holiday break, we did an approach which was team cleaning, and we did get some really good feedback from that that I wanted to kind of go over a little bit. We just kind of broke up our teams and divided them into schools throughout the day. So we had probably a total of eight to ten people in schools as we went through. And it worked really well. Our staff, they were, they adjusted to moving to different schools daily. And they did a good job, you know, going through and really detailing and getting everything completed within that day or two, depending on whether it was a larger school or a smaller one. So we will probably, well, not probably, but we will be continuing that throughout summer breaks and then obviously next year with holiday break as well due to its success. So that will be one of the future goals that we continue to do. Again, just continue aggressive hiring. We will continue to work hard to attract these candidates and really kind of retain them and make sure that we are doing the best we can to keep them on board as well. And then again, just continue inspections to support our KPIs, do a better job, like it was discussed earlier, of making sure we're hitting each school and being consistent with that as well. All right, so that would bring it to questions and discussions.
Number Brooks?
No questions.
Number Chastain?
I do have just one. First, thank you, I always appreciate the thoroughness of you all's presentations, thank you for that. And I can only imagine the challenges that you all face trying to keep as many schools and as big as our district is. And so the fact that the average is about eighty-eight percent should be applauded. What I noticed in the data, however, is that the classrooms were consistently low, below seventy percent. While we did really well with like the cafeteria, the gym, the kitchen, but the classroom itself. So could you talk to me just briefly about why the classrooms were consistently low? Was it just like the lack of being able to like inspect them? I was just curious about that.
So a lot of it has been, obviously, and I don't want to blame it all, but obviously, being short-staffed, you know, we've been, you know, kind of pulling people from places, and they're covering more than they typically do. So that has been a challenge through this time. As we've hired more people in, it has gotten a little easier and it has really relieved some of that stress for them. But it was, you know, a lot of stress trying to cover more of the building than they typically would cover on a day-to-day basis.
With the short staff, do you all ever like prioritize? If it's a checklist, right, and it's twenty things we got to do, but we only got staff to do five, do you ever prioritize, at least do classroom, kitchen, cafeteria? Like, do you ever prioritize what that should look like?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. You know, in those buildings that we might be more short-staffed than others, we definitely communicate with the staff and make sure they know what they need to be taking care of. And a lot of it is also training and making sure that they know everything that they need to be doing, and we're working with that with the managers as well.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Mr. Christensen?
Okay, thank you for your presentation, nice to see you again. As it was mentioned, this presentation was brought forward to FNO last week. I don't have any other further questions, just more so a comment. You know, thank you for the updated data on the hiring, you know, we're encouraged by the numbers. We know that it's been really difficult to obviously hire staff, and it's a challenge across all our buildings from a clean standpoint. So I know we had lengthy discussion about that, but I just want to say thank you for the updated numbers. I'm encouraged by them, we still have a long way to go. So I'm hoping that we gain some traction in the next, you know, months, days, what have you. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Keough?
Thank you. I do want to recap some of the things we spoke about for the people here and the full board as well as for those that might be watching at home and those in the audience here. First, I want to commend ABM for the professionalism and the strong process that you bring to this work. I mean, it's clear that you have a continuous improvement mindset, you use data to help improve the process, and you really drive these activities. And that shows in both your presentations and your daily work and everything that's happening. And I think that if you can ever get fully staffed, we will be very happy. That being said, we're not close. We're supposed to have a hundred and four cleaners on staff right now, eighty-four normal, and then we've added an additional twenty as part of this process, and we're currently at seventy point five. Now, I was encouraged by the commitment that was made by Eric and Kyle in the meeting that we had for FNO last Thursday, that by the end of this month, we will have eighty-five to ninety FTEs, and I expect to see that happen. So, and I expect to hear the great presentation you bring forward in our first FNO meeting in February to share those results and to be able to really bring us to the point that we're driving this process forward. There were also some misses that happened, there were six schools that were not formally inspected. They dropped out of your process, and you know, that's, for a company that's a strongly process-focused, to have those schools completely missed is not really a good activity. I look forward to seeing those schools be part of the metrics and the process that you have going forward and that we do a good job of addressing that clean. You know, the big struggle that we have right now is, from what I can see, is largely around the staffing levels. You've got, you know, sixty percent of the staff that you're supposed to have, you're doing a pretty good job with that, but you're putting a tremendous strain on our staff because they're doing extra cleaning. We've got our teachers doing cleaning, we've got people that are already overburdened doing cleaning in this process in order to make sure that our students are coming into a clean environment and managing this activity. And I recognize that this is an exceptional time, but this contract was awarded during the middle of COVID. So it's not a surprise in this process. And ABM is a vaunted company that is supposed to be the expert in this process with hundreds of thousands of employees. So we expect better, and I appreciate your commitment in being able to address those issues as we move forward. I also want to commend you on the retention rate because that is really good, and it's clear that your processes and your work you're doing are going to help us with that process. So if we can hire the people and keep them on board, I think that we'll have a successful relationship going forward, but there's got to be more done. And I don't want to be here in another one of these meetings next quarter talking about the same issue again. The last question I had was, that's more of a statement, so if you have any doubts or clarifications on that, please, I'd welcome those now. If you don't, then I'll accept that we're in agreement based upon the conversations that we had in FNO. The last question I had was for Rich, and that was on the school dude. I know that you gave us an update in the board notes on the process, but we want to see added to this presentation the charts that we've had with the number of activities. I don't think that that got included. So if you can just update that for board notes going for this past quarter and then for subsequent quarters, include them in the holistic presentation.
Definitely will.
Okay.
Mr. Wilson? All right, so Mr. Keough hit my questions. I had questions about the six schools that had been, like, why they were not looked at formally. Because, you know, Workman is one of our larger, is our largest elementary school, and then a big high school. And then the school dude, I wanted to see also. And then, I'm just echo what Member Chastain said about prioritizing the tasks in the buildings to make sure that some, there are some things that you absolutely have to have done for the children to be in the school. And if those could be prioritized to make sure, because we do get the emails from parents and teachers and staff. There's nothing like going into your classroom and it hasn't been cleaned, and you're trying to get that done before the children show up. So, but thank you so much for this presentation. We look forward to seeing you fully staffed and then these numbers going way, way up. Thank you. And we are now on four, which is student services with Mr. Tiskowitz.
Thank you, President McCoy. Before you tonight, we have the approval, well, the consideration of the approval of the resolution for a school of choice. This will be our non-resident program that we have offered for the last nine years for the twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three school year. This proposal, the resolution, is for school of choice. That would be section one oh five, which is including all of Wayne County and the surrounding counties contiguous to Wayne County, would allow families that live in those communities to attend school here in Plymouth Canton. We are recommending a minimum of one seat for kindergarten through tenth grade for a maximum of two hundred and fifty seats. And this is consistent with the past few years that we've done this recommendation. And I think I'll stop there and allow you to ask any questions you might have with that resolution.
All right, does anybody have any questions about this?
Kurt, the one oh five C allows us to do the students in the neighboring districts, even outside of the county, correct?
Yeah, that would be all of the contiguous counties, Wayne County, Oakley, McCollum, Washinah. What am I forgetting here?
Is it the full county or is it just the communities that border?
In those contiguous counties as well, so.
The full county?
Full county, correct.
Thank you.
Anybody else? No? Okay.
And Kurt, even though we authorize these number of students, we don't typically end up hitting that number, correct? Because it's.
Yeah, last year, we had two hundred and fifty students, I think, and in the end, we enrolled approximately one hundred and eighty-seven. Overall, in the, to date, we have nine hundred and forty-nine students that are in the school of choice program here in the district in all the years that have stayed with us as of January.
All right, thank you.
All right. The next resolution for your consideration is the enrollment of non-resident students of our PCCS employees for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. This recommendation allows any staff member who does not live in the Plymouth Canton district to bring their children here. And this is a program that we've run as long, as long as we've been running the school of choice option as well.
Does anybody have any questions?
I got a quick clarifying question, I'm sorry, Kurt. You said a minimum of one and a maximum of two fifty.
For a school of choice program, correct?
And that was K through twelve?
K-ten.
K-ten, thanks.
Just to clarify, it's a minimum of one per grade.
Thanks.
Yeah.
That's a requirement for the program.
Does anybody have anything else? All right, so we are now on to E, which is citizens' comments. So when I call your name to post the podium, Mr. Brandon will start the timer. You will have three minutes. State your name and give your comment. When the timer goes off, finish it up. So the first one I have is Katie Bennett.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Katie Bennett, and I have a second-grade son at Smith and a third-grade son at Gallimore. And over the last six months, you've all received a few emails from me asking to end the excessive COVID mitigation measures that are in their schools right now, primarily due to the negative impact that they're having on kids' mental health. I know everybody in this room is very familiar with the fact that rates of anxiety, depression, suicide, drug use, and eating disorders have all significantly increased in the last two years, even more so with our minority students. But to quote Vivek Murthy lately, who was on NPR the other day, he says, "This is a critical issue that we have to do something about now, we cannot wait until this pandemic is over." So tonight, I wanted to share with you a few of the examples of the things that my kids are experiencing every single day that I believe are impacting their mental health negatively. First, it's lunch and recess. So all educators know how important lunch and recess are for elementary kids. It is critical to their mental health development. With regards to lunch specifically, the CDC and the American Academy of Pediatrics recommend a minimum of twenty minutes for children to eat lunch so they can socialize and they can eat a balanced meal. Right now, lunch is twenty, fifteen minutes. It's twenty-five percent less than what is recommended. Kids who are bringing lunch from home walk into the lunchroom, they sit down, they have to wait until kids who buy get their lunch, and then they sit down. Then they're starting a timer. These kids are timed for that specific fifteen minutes, there is a countdown involved. And I don't know about you, but nothing would probably increase my anxiety more than someone timing me with a stopwatch and giving me less time to eat lunch. On Friday, my son commented that he couldn't finish his lunch, he had to throw it away, and there was no option for him to extend his mealtime. In addition, kids are seated three feet apart, they're assigned a seat, they do not get to choose who they sit by, and they cannot sit with kids from other classes. This is their only period of socialization, and none of it is really their choice. After lunch, children usually go out for recess. However, with all the cold weather we've had and the rainy weather we had in the fall, kids are doing indoor recess. During indoor recess, kids must remain at their desks with their masks on and play alone for thirty minutes. For many of these indoor recesses, my kids have told me they can't talk, and they can stand up, but they can't leave their desk. Ironically, this week, the same day my kids are sitting by themselves for indoor recess, their SEL lesson topic is, quote, "How to Make Friends." I don't think I need to explain to any of you how difficult it is when you're not getting lunchtime to talk to your friends and you don't get to talk to your friends during recess. It's also important to note that when children do not go outside, they are wearing a mask for six hours and forty-five minutes each day. I'm not here to get into a mask debate with you. All I'm trying to say is that they're not getting the mask breaks that this administration has talked about. I'm sorry, I'm over time. They also were instructed last week to pull down their masks during lunch, put a piece of food in their mouth, and pull their mask back up. They're not even taking off their masks for snack anymore. I'm trying to fly through here, guys, I apologize for the time thing. I'm going to skip over the next session, which is on quarantining kids because MDHHS did just recently update that. However, this district has not yet updated based on the most recent guidelines for that. And then lastly, I'm going to just email you guys this whole entire speech since I worked hard on it. But basically, my conclusion is that there are a lot of mitigation measures that are still in place. No gym class in the gym, no field trips, no class parties of volunteers, no assemblies. However, the same sentiment continues to exist that school is not normal, anywhere close to normal, and the damage that's being done to kids' mental health is still happening. And the reality at this point is despite the surge that we are in, COVID is going to be a part of our lives for a long time. People are going to get COVID, it's going to happen no matter what preventative measures we have in place. Kids can be vaccinated, adults can be vaccinated. And it's time that we talk more about how to dial back some of these extreme mitigation measures so we can get closer to normal. Because at this point, children have suffered the most, they have sacrificed the most in the last two years. And I hope that we can come to some sort of conclusion and move forward where we don't have to make them suffer for any longer. So I apologize for the time, I will email this to you guys, and I appreciate your time this evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And next, we have Sam Galia.
Hello, my name is Sam Galia, and I moved into the Plymouth Canton School District last December. And I live behind the trees in the area where the trees at Gallimore are. And there are several trees that are dead, some of the branches have fallen, some of the branches are sitting in my shed. And I called the school facilities department after the Fourth of July to have somebody come out there, and I called again a certain times after that, and have gotten no response. Any questions?
So during citizens' comments, this is a time for you to bring your concerns. We don't interact.
Oh, okay.
But if there are concerns, usually Superintendent Mara will have someone from her staff follow up later.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Cara Gavin.
Good evening, I'm Cara Gavin, mother of a seventh grader at West Middle School and a member of a grassroots group of parents and community members who have connected online about COVID-related matters. Last time I spoke, on December seventh, there was a note of hope in the air. Cases of COVID were high, but children were getting vaccinated, the holidays were coming, and we were hearing that rapid testing might be available soon from the state. But here we are, a month later, and oh, how the world has changed. Case rates in the Plymouth Canton area have skyrocketed to more than double what they were a month ago. were a month ago. Rapid tests and appointments for PCR tests are hard to find, and results take much longer to get. Only one in four Wayne County children between the ages of five and 11 has even started the vaccination process, and school districts in our county and across the state are pivoting to virtual learning temporarily. And a new law allows people with no teaching credentials or higher education to be counted as substitute teachers. Hospitals are pleading with the public to reduce the spread however they can, and today, the State Health Department announced that we are still weeks away from the crest of this surge. I want my daughter to be able to go to school in person, as do most of the parents I've connected with. I want her to be able to play in the band concert next week as planned. But I and my fellow Science-Minded parents have some key questions for the board and the district leadership. One, what will it take to cause our district to move to virtual learning temporarily so that all our children have a chance to learn and certified teachers can introduce new material and stay on track with curriculum? Two, if we do pivot to virtual learning, is there a plan to help the parents who are essential workers by giving them a location for their child to do their online learning under supervision so they can go to work? Three, if we do stay in person, will you commit to frequent and strong reminders about the importance of keeping children at home if they have symptoms or are unvaccinated and waiting for PCR test results? Four, if we do stay in person, will you follow the state's guidelines about large events, including sports, and pivot them to live streams or to dramatically reduce attendance? Watching my daughter play her band concert over Zoom wouldn't be ideal, but I'll put up with it if it means the band can still play together. Five, will the district finally get rapid tests from the state and make them available to families so that we can have equitable access regardless of ability to pay? And could you contract to add PCR testing on a district location? Six, will the district spend emergency funds to purchase KN95 masks for students as well as staff? These offer hours of protection against coronavirus when local transmission is high. Seven, will you commit to timely updating of the district dashboard, which seems to be constantly out of date compared with the letters that people are getting? Eight, will you hold more vaccination clinics and share additional messaging about the importance of getting vaccinated and boosted? And nine, will you use your position of authority to remind everyone affiliated with our district that the choices we make outside the school will affect our ability to stay in school? Thank you.
Thank you. And last, we have Bill Laurley.
I wanted to talk a little bit today about the upcoming construction projects. Obviously, today, a few items were pulled off of the agenda, and I apologize for not attending the last FNO meeting where some of my comments might have been a little bit more pertinent. However, I wanted to just remind everybody that things that you should be expecting from your construction manager as these projects start. It doesn't always have to be the major construction projects like the ones happening at the high school. It could happen about any project, but I wanted to remind people that you should be seeing what I call logistics planning. Logistics planning is usually done by a construction manager or maybe one of the contractors, but it's a plan that delineates the construction zone versus the school zone, the delineation of the security between construction and the public or the school, or any other border that happens to be in the area. That could either be security fencing if it's outside, it could be partitions, walls on the inside, could be barricades, but they need to be secured and locked. These are things that should be shown on a logistics plan. These are things that should be given to you by your construction manager. And again, I apologize for maybe being not cognizant. If that has already happened, I don't know, but just something to be aware of. But generally, the construction zone is meant, on the contractor's side, it's meant to show, this is where we're working, let's keep the public out of here. If you're on the school's side of it, you want to know that where is the zone because I want to keep those construction guys out of the school and out of my way. So the construction zone, the logistics plan should show the zone very clearly, and it should be there for several purposes and for several views. Other things that should be shown on a logistics plan include traffic control, bus routes that might be changing, parking that might be associated with the projects, designated pedestrian areas, pedestrian access. All these things should be shown on your logistics plan, particularly things like demolition. Always encourage noise and other hazardous activities. Again, your logistics plan should be phased so that if things change, it should be posted, it should be published. There are apps that do this nowadays that I'm not familiar with, but again, you should be aware of it, and again, you may have, your construction manager is already doing it, so I apologize if I've missed the mark on those items. I think I've heard everything. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, so now we are down to F, which is action items and discussion. First up, we have COVID-19 mitigation plans discussion.
All right. Thank you very much, President McCoy. And although we don't officially respond to citizens' comments at this point, and as President McCoy said, we will get back to you to answer questions, I think that a lot of the things we heard, I hope to address in our conversation this evening. Just wanted to provide, every time that we come together at a board meeting, an opportunity to discuss our current mitigation plans and what's happening within our community and how that impacts our schools. I will, to use the word that this week, since we've returned from break, has been challenging is definitely an understatement. As we have experienced this surge in our local community, it has absolutely spilled over into our schools. I will share something that I think it's very important to share. I heard a comment about our dashboard, and I know in this time period, there is a feeling that schools are not being transparent or we're trying to hide cases. And I do want to advocate very strongly on behalf of our nursing team that that is the furthest thing from the truth. They have had to manage hundreds of cases that came in over the winter break. When we think about our school-associated cases, we are required to post a school-associated case means that the person that was positive was here on school grounds during a certain window of time. Over winter break, for example, we, at two weeks where maybe a positive case never set foot on school grounds, so that's not a school-associated case. It will not be reported on the website. However, our nursing staff still has to work and investigate that case. You need to know, for example, what is the quarantine requirement, that window for that person to be able to return to school? There's also some contact tracing that's going on. So there was a backlog, just making sure that they're focusing on that positive case, number one, to make sure that that person is not returning to school before they need to be. There are also cases of students or staff that may have come to school over break if they were participating in extracurricular activities. So really, just working to go through those. They got an update to those by the end of the week, so you would see a large number that actually were added to the website, might be confusing, so looking how to report that so it doesn't seem as if we had 200 cases on one day. But even with those, they truly don't reflect the number of cases that occurred over the last few weeks. When we talk about this surge, as I think Ms. Gavin shared, just the number of cases in our community in Wayne County alone were well over 34%, almost 35% positivity. And so, good news, if we have good news, is that we're still not experiencing a lot of in-school transmission in terms of secondary transmission. What's happening in this extremely large, high transmissibility in our community, it just spills over into schools. So a lot of our cases, our students are coming, our staff is coming, they've been impacted. We figure that out once they've gotten into school, and we have to do that work to unfold. So I say all of that to set the case first. I just need the reputation and the character of our nursing staff and our employees not to be challenged. No one is trying to hide. We want to be transparent, but it's a lot of work. Maybe one case sometimes takes 70 calls when you're going back and forth. And so those will be updated in as a timely fashion as they can be. Since the time that we have returned, we've remained in constant communication with our teams. We've had teams that we're working with, epidemiologists, our nursing staff, meetings after meetings after meetings, just looking at the impact of the current surge and what should we do with our current mitigation plans? Are there some things that we can do to strengthen? If we think about the beginning of this pandemic, many people are asking us the question, well, how can you still be in school when we're so much worse than we were with numbers, positivity, hospitalization rates than at the beginning? And our answer to that is, our goal has always been to be in person. As we heard earlier, we do recognize the impact of not being in person for many of our students that need to learn in a building, not just academically. We've shown you at the last meeting that our kids in aggregate have done pretty well as expected academically, although we'll look next month at our disaggregated data, and some students have really struggled through this pandemic. So that's a factor. But more importantly, their mental health, they're psychologically, they're emotionally, socially truly impacted, and those are going to be things that we'll experience over the years to come. And so it really is important for most of our students to learn in person with their teachers and the supports that we can recognize and provide. So that's always been our number-one goal. We were in a different place in March 2020 in terms of our knowledge of COVID-19, the disease itself, but really the tools that we have available to us. So we have more vaccinations available to us, we have more testing, but as you heard, that is currently a barrier, getting testing. And, you know, we've heard stories of people waiting in line, myself, I was in line for four hours one evening just waiting for a PCR test. So we have these tools at our disposal, we have our mitigation plans that are in place, and so there's more support to keep our students in school. I will say the challenge, though, that we are experiencing is a staffing challenge. Because of quarantine protocols, if someone is positive or even has a family member that they need to care for, we need to give respect to allow that to occur. And so we're constantly daily monitoring our attendance for students and staff to just ensure. And we truly, you know, we talk early on about mental health and take care of yourself, and I don't think any of our staff will even hear that right now because you're saying, how do you take care of yourself? But you're asking me to give up my planning period, I'm cleaning my room, you know, I can't barely breathe, and I have to account for all of these challenges to support my students. So the reality is, it has been a struggle. We monitor that daily. I will say, because I think people don't know as a district how we're impacted, 75% is our attendance. You have, there's no flexibility now in attendance, or our students have to have 75%, and that's a district metric in order to count the day. We are averaging, since we've returned from break, 85, 86, 87% attendance. That's strong. So we are not at a place where we're looking at having to shut down. However, we did establish metrics at the beginning of this pandemic, and those are still in place. That might trigger a conversation about a classroom going to virtual. That metric has always been greater than 50%, and that is either a continuity of learning situation if their teacher is out, over half the students are out. We trigger a case review to say, does that classroom need to go to virtual learning for a time period? We also look at that 25% standard, because again, you're looking at counting, being able to count that day of instruction. So when we're looking at a secondary level, that's that trigger that goes to a discussion if we have greater than 25%. We also look if we have a particular outbreak situation. So talking with the health department, they look at a case that's associated oftentimes around 10% are connected to one as an epilent case, and could that be a situation where we need to slow that environment down and pause for a little bit? So those metrics that have been in place are still our same metrics that would contribute to, if we had to make a decision to pause a classroom, to pause a grade level, even to pause a building. But again, I want to emphasize, 85%, 86%, 87%, I won't even say, just with someone who wanted to jump on the spot, I think Monday, we were even growing even higher, you know, 89% possibly of our students that are here. We monitor that every day. We want to communicate that out, and we'll look forward to kind of getting that information out so people really know that we're not in that space where we're really looking to shut down a district and go virtual. Now, with that being said, the importance of really adhering to these layered mitigation strategies that we have in place. The reality, as you've heard even tonight, COVID is everywhere right now in this surge, and there's some new guidelines that have come down from both the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services as well as our Wayne County Health Department. We always follow the guidance, as we've done from the top of this pandemic through the healthcare professionals. We are the educators, we align those choices with the healthcare professionals. Early on through this winter break, the CDC came up with new guidelines around quarantines and talking about the science now with this disease, understanding that there's a time period where people are more contagious the first 48 hours, sometimes before symptoms, and more contagious the 48 hours after. So they reduced this 10-day quarantine down to five, but there's some criteria around that five, if you're not symptomatic, for example. If you don't have a fever, that you can consider. Now, Michigan Department of Health and Human Services did come out and adopt those same guidelines. They adopted them for the general public, and they excluded schools. So I communicated early, I believe it was a Sunday before we came back to break, to say, yes, we know these guidelines exist, they do not apply to schools. K-12, we still are keeping forward, moving forward with our 10 days. Last evening, as many of you are aware, the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services did adopt those same guidelines for K-12. Now, as I said, we have three sources we work with. CDC is one, the Michigan Department of Human Health Services, and our local health department. Wayne County Health Department came out also last evening and indicated that they will be adopting those same guidelines for here in our schools in Wayne County. So right now, it's about working together to talk about how we implement those guidelines. We want to make sure that we educate our community, our staff, our students, our families on what that looks like. We're still waiting, so we have the indication from Wayne County Health Department that they are adopting these guidelines. That's through an email and looking to have some actual guidelines that have the, you know, there's some visuals that are associated with MDHHS, how is this implemented, if you're vaccinated versus unvaccinated? And so working through those, and hopefully that will come soon so we know exactly what that looks like in order to move that forward and implement that. In addition to the guidelines for quarantine, and I will share those more in writing, we can talk about those tonight, but just in a nutshell, when we look at those five days, as I said, there's some distinctions. If you're asymptomatic, for example, after day five, you still think about your quarantine as being 10 days, right? If you go through five days, you're asymptomatic, you would be permitted to return. If you have a situation where you still have a fever, you're still experiencing symptoms, then you would continue to quarantine through that amount of time. There's also some distinction with close contacts. If you're a close contact, you're vaccinated, and you would not be required to quarantine according to the new guidelines, but you would still monitor yourself for symptoms over 10 days. So those are things that we want to make sure that we will communicate clearly what those guidelines are and that we, as a district, would follow the healthcare experts. In addition to those guidelines of quarantine and isolation, the Wayne County Health Department has issued new guidance on close contact tracing in school settings. So I just kind of want to be clear what that guidance is, and we're still waiting for the details from the Health Department in terms of implementing. As I said earlier, COVID-19 being everywhere, it is really difficult when you're in a school setting to determine where is that source of contact, because no one else in the state really has these requirements that we have within schools. If you go to a restaurant, there's no longer contact tracing. If you're in a movie theater, there's not contact tracing. So we really are only doing that as a school. If you think about the actual requirements, the requirement is really for the Health Department to do the contact tracing, and they were overwhelmed so early in the pandemic. We, as a school district and many school districts philosophically believe that that was the safest thing for us to do. So our nursing staff, our administrative staff, our teaching staff have taken over contact tracing in our schools for the last couple of years. During this surge alone, our human resources were just taxed in terms of trying to contact trace. And again, you know, you're looking at five days out, and a person could be so many different places in the community, it's really hard to say where that contact trace, where that source of link took place. So I say all of that to say, the new guidelines from Wayne County Health Department would indicate, if you are in a school setting, there is no longer contact tracing that will occur. What will happen is with the case identification letter. So we all really need to think about, anybody in the room has the potential to have been exposed to COVID-19. You monitor yourself if you get that indication that there's a positive case in your building and your classroom. Those are the general letters that go out, and you continue to monitor your student for symptoms along those times. If you experience that, you follow that same process. So that's information that we're looking for more really details when we communicate that out, but again, these are the health officials, and we align ourselves with that information. Now, realizing that in the middle of this surge, some of those things feel like, well, how are you relaxing those Health Department? The reality is, the conversation that they're saying to us, it's really about those other layered mitigation strategies, and it's so, so, so important to encourage and for our seats to encourage vaccinations, to encourage testing and trying to find ways that we can help remove those barriers. I will share. I will share that we have been approved, we've applied and we have been approved. I think I shared it at the last meeting for the Michigan Backpack Program. We were approved for the total number of students and staff that we serve in our community. So 22,500 kits. Now here comes the barrier in terms of when do they put them in our hands. We will, we're expected to get 10,500 kits within the next two weeks and then we have to reapply for our other 10,500. So our nursing staff will really look, will be more difficult to just say, okay, let's only give out 10,500 and just the rest of you have to wait. Those kits will contain two tests each. So really thinking about a way that we can get those in the hands of people that need them, that are maybe experiencing a positive case and need some testing of family members. This close contact quarantine that I talked about, not doing the contact tracing in a school setting doesn't apply in a home setting or outside of school. So there's, close contact tracing still exists outside and maybe we can help with those testings. We also have access through our health department of some test kits and help me if I'm using the wrong words there. But with those kits, we get 40 kits and it's called a reagent. So there's only one reagent that determines if this is a positive test. So that has to be administered at school with that one person who's trained to read that. Couple of those kits I will say came without the reagent, so that's interesting. But anyway, so we have those in our possession and really looking for a way that we can systemically help to get more testing out for those that need it. The third resource as we're trying to implement the ETS program currently that we know the Supreme Court is hearing that, we don't know where that will stand, but we as a school district are readying ourselves and our staff for that. And that would begin if you are not vaccinated and or have not turned that information over to HR, you would have to agree to weekly testing, realizing again, that's a barrier. Our team has been working with third parties to see if we can get the convenience of testing here on site. And so we've had quite a few companies that we found that hopefully we'll be able to work with and also have that ability to test students as well, not just the staff. The staff of course would be the priority because we want to make sure that we're doing that weekly, but also extend that to our community members as well. So we're eagerly looking for ways that we can access testing, put testing in the hands of our families because again, that is one of the greatest mitigation strategies right now when we know that COVID for the next few weeks, this surge, you know, it's here, it's everywhere and how do we continue to manage? I heard Ms. Benet, you're talking about it's not normal. It is the furthest thing from normal within our buildings. And I was the one who was here last summer talking about, we're ready to get back to our new normal and shame on me for thinking that that was going to be our reality. But I promise you it is our commitment to get there eventually. Right now, our commitment is to try to keep our schools open, open for in-person. We believe that. And as much as it is, it is not where we want to be, we believe that that's the best opportunity to get there. So when we think about our lunch programs right now, while we're in high levels, when we talk about schools as being low risk, that includes classroom for no contact tracing. They've included lunchrooms even though we have students unmasked, but we're still trying to look at the ability to limit that time period when students are unmasked to less than 15 minutes. The aerosol nature especially of this Omicron variant, you know, is that the right move? Or what it's what we have to try to help ensure. So we are working, but we will never force a child not to be able to eat. So we are trying to communicate with our cafeteria staff. We're trying to get that eating down to that less than 15-minute increment. And if a child needs more time to eat to be able to allow that time to eat, we have implemented that in our, just last week to say, take a bite, put your mask on, or if you have your mask down for 10 minutes and try to put it back up just to get another layer of mitigation. And just working with our building principals to say, what type of strategies are you using and what's effective? So kind of sharing those strategies and then looking to see what can we memorialize as an actual change in our mitigation plans. When we look at the guidance along large gatherings, we've done the work to say, if we have activities that are greater than 100 people, the risk versus the reward. So if it's, we had a cluster concert, I think that all, was that all fourth graders would have been coming to Salem High School. We don't need to do that right now because that might risk taking out our, our fourth graders for quarantine or our staff. So is that something we can do in a virtual setting? Is that something that we can do at a little later time? At the same week, we had a robotics competition. So that's something that we're not going to be able to pause, but how can we ensure that we have extra mitigation strategies in place, how to keep people spread out? When we look at our athletic events, our middle schools, because they don't have a lot of space within their gymnasiums, implemented a two-person spectator per athlete for this time period of a surge. So they're looking through the end of January and then will we visit that again in February? When we look at our high schools, many of our activities don't have 100 people that are there, but we have more space. So they actually have pulled down more bleachers. I think where we had access to some bleachers that were on the side, so using every bleacher that we have available. We thank Rich and his team for kind of helping us with that. Working to reemphasize our masking, the importance of a well-fitted mask and more staff available at that site to just help enforcement, putting up signs, having announcements more periodically during events to ensure that people are masking. So again, going through all of our current mitigation strategies, seeing how we can tighten them further because it's all about the vaccination, the testing and all of these extra layers. We have our air purifiers. Those are supposed to be changed every year, but we as a district have committed to six months and we're actually at a cycle where we rechange them over break. I want to use the number, Rich, about 85% and we're at the five months. So we will definitely make sure that all of those air purifier filters are changed. We continue to encourage, even though it's very, very cold, if you can open up a window, if you have access to a window to get some free, fresh air flowing in at times, to continue to do that. So really focusing on those mitigation strategies with that goal of staying in school. And now looking at these new guidelines and the ability to implement those, which would be our intention of doing, I wanted to give an opportunity to get some feedback, some conversation this evening from board members. Our goal is to tomorrow, get a communication out to our families about these new guidelines, but also recognizing we're still waiting for something from the health department that gives us some specifics. So we may not have that by tomorrow, but a communication to still go out to say, these are the new guidelines, this is what you can expect and we'll further communicate in terms of implementation. So I think I've covered a lot right now, but would like to pause and maybe answer some questions that you may have, get some thoughts that you may have, as well as we continue to work together to keep our buildings open for our students.
Mr. Brooks?
Questions?
Ms. Chielstein?
I don't have any questions.
No questions either. Just thank you for the thorough synopsis. I mean, we've had a lot of conversations about this, obviously through board notes and other, other things. And I just thought that was a very concise way of packaging everything that's going on right now. Thank you.
Mr. Keough?
So again, I want to echo the thanks there is that there's a lot of great work that's going on right now. I do have a few questions though. The one that's particularly causing me concerns is the policy that the Wayne County Health Department is advocating of no contact tracing. Because the guidelines from MDHHS are very clear, as are those from the CDC, that if you are a close contact and you're vaccinated, you don't need to quarantine. But if you're not vaccinated, you either need to quarantine or test to stay for at least the first five days. And if we're not contact tracing, then we're not following those guidelines. And this just, the contradiction in that just does not make any sense at all to me in this, in this process.
So we've met with our nurses. We're also having similar questions to try to understand and we've, we've sent some questions to the health department just to get some further clarification around that. I do want to clarify that it's no contact tracing in a school setting, but contact tracing still does exist. So as I said earlier, a lot of our cases are taking place outside of school. So if you have a positive case that's not school-associated, contact tracing still has to exist. So if you have, you know, it's a family member contact or so those, so that we're still going through those guidelines as well.
Absolutely. But the struggle is, is if we look at the situation at lunch, if we have a student that is sitting unmasked for 15 minutes, three feet away, as we heard at the elementary level and not six, then that's considered a close contact for that, that situation. If we're not doing that contact tracing, then we're increasing the risk profile in our, in our district and risking spreading those situations. The masks are incredibly effective in addressing this, especially if people wear KN95s. They can provide up to 20 hours of protection with a new mask if both parties are masked. But when you're unmasked, you have no protection there. And since we only have a 25% vaccination rate in our, in our county for, for our youngest students, this is a substantial risk that we're taking in this process, which risks us not being able to stay in school. And that's the thing that gives me concern. So I would have significant reservations on us not doing the contact tracing. We've been taking the burden on that contact tracing. I think we should continue to take the burden on that until such time as we see the numbers start to go down.
So like I said, we have similar questions and some of the feedback when we talk about the fact that there's not contact tracing going on anywhere. And so the idea of a notification and really a change of the mindset that COVID-19 is everywhere and you need to be constantly checking and monitoring for symptoms and doing that daily screening. So even in a situation where you're at a lunchroom, and so we would indicate then that your child was exposed to COVID-19. So there's still, that's, that's their guidance is although you're not in that school setting doing contact tracing, you are indicating that there's a positive test and for 10-day, a positive exposure to your child and for 10 days you need to monitor. So that same family could go into the community and have another source of, of contact. We, we agree on this and it's kind of that same thing, our conversations today, we want further understanding is to say, well, these are the experts. For two years, we said we have to depend on them. If they're using the science and telling us this is what we need to do, then it's hard to say, well, we're not going to trust you on this one, but we're going to trust you on everything else.
Yeah, I, I agree, but this just, MDHHS is very clear that the close contacts require to be quarantined if you're unvaccinated. And, and not, not identifying close contacts is like sweeping the problem under the rug.
And like I said, their, their response to us is that it's still not, close contacts still have to be identified. It's the close contact tracing. And one thing that we still have another question now is it says most extracurricular activities in the email that they've given. So we want to know what that is. So currently we have athletes, when they're actively competing, that are not masked. And Washtenaw County issued guidance last week where they distinguished and they consider that high risk and they actually are doing contact tracing in schools for athletics. So will that come from Wayne County? It very well may. So we're looking for those guidelines to say, what does that mean?
I appreciate that. We've got some smart people at Wayne County. This is not well-informed guidance. And we've seen problems in our health departments around the country. The CDC's guidance themselves was horrible in terms of what they said. It's like, oh, you had COVID. You just sit around for five days, it's not a test to stay, not anything. They've come back and corrected that, but health departments are not infallible in this process and we've seen poor communication around. So I appreciate the fact that you're trying to get clarity on this before we communicate this out. Because the last thing we want to do is communicate a bad message that came from Wayne County that they come back and actually correct.
The next day.
Correct. Yeah, thank you. And I'm sorry, one last question. You mentioned the backpack process where we're going to get tests that we can send to families. I was a little bit unclear, how do people sign up for that? How do they get access to it? When will we start distributing?
So we don't have that full answer yet. Our nursing staff is working on it. We had a different mindset last week where we thought because it was going to be staggered when we took ownership, that what we would like to do is make sure that we put a supply in each of our buildings first. And then if they're, we're doing our contact tracing, we're saying these, you have been identified as a close contact and we're going to supply you with some home kits so you can monitor. That was kind of our thought. Well, now with these new rules, we have to say, well, what does that look like? Because it would be just to give 10,500 tests out to these schools and maybe people would never need them. And then we have 10,500 people that don't have access to test. That might not be the best way to do it. So I'm just depending on the nursing staff to come up with some new procedures around once we hopefully get more information about when we'll receive. They said two weeks, but I think that was probably two weeks ago. Yeah, because I announced it at the last board meeting, we still don't have them. And then again, we have to reapply and get the next test. So we'll give you a process for that.
And the last thing is, is you mentioned that we were getting other tests. Are those to support a test to stay program that we would administer in the schools?
Yes. So we had those and I, is anybody from there around that? It was MDHHS that got those tests through Wayne recently, I believe. They came in a kit of, we had, we have access, we were given 250. There's 40 tests per one reagent, a couple of our...
So they're gang testing. So you, you test 40 people?
So we can't send them home. They have to be on site. Where one person is using the reagent to say whether or not it's positive.
Okay.
But that's good to have if we have a situation, for example, where a student is in school, don't have testing and we can hit, you know, instead of having to wait four hours, parents, you know, can work there and get that student tested at school or a staff member as well.
Okay. So if you can update the board as to those testing programs as well as obviously the community, but I know that some of those things are in process right now. But thank you very much for the detailed information.
Mr. Wilson?
Just fantastic update and I think remember Keough answered or asked a lot of the questions I had as well. I would just make the comment that, you know, I think we've always seen the, the guidance of the experts as kind of the foundation that we didn't build our, you know, our decisions off of. And so I think that's a similar situation where if we really believe that contact tracing is important and we have the ability to continue it, you know, I think it's something important to look at. But it sounds like you and your team are weighing that right now. So really it's just a comment. Thank you.
Yeah, I had the same question. So you've covered that. I appreciate that. I wanted to ask about, you talked about you wanted, you were trying to get testing for employees?
Yes.
So were you looking to test all the employees or just the ones who haven't turned in vaccination cards?
So the idea is to get the third party for the people that have to do weekly testing if they haven't had vaccination cards. At the same time, talking to them about the ability. So that's our priority because you have to get tested weekly. But also if there's someone who just needs access to a test and they can't go down the street because they're waiting for ten hours for students. So trying to see, I think, you know, Dr. Barkanian gives, am I saying all of that correctly?
Yes.
Most of the companies would have focus on staff, but also other...
Correct. Our nurse manager, as well as some of our nurses have met with some of the companies who are able to provide weekly testing. We would like our testing on-site and we also would like our people to be able to test at home if they want to. So we're looking for both options with the company that we are going to contract with that would begin at the beginning of February. Thank you.
I have a comment. I'm sorry, it's also a question. I'm also a mom in the district, right? And my son and his, all of his friends, they are very concerned about being in a classroom and half of their peers are out due to COVID or, you know, worrying about whether or not we're going to go virtual and are we prepared? So while we send these emails out to the parents, and yes, we rely on our parents to communicate it to our students, I don't think that we're doing a good job addressing our students' concerns about how they show up in the classroom because they're very real and tangible. And so the way you talk about it in the board meetings are clear and concise and, and you get it. And then the communication, I'm like, the fact that you said the threshold is 75%, but we're at 80 some, 80-plus percent, so we're in a good space. I don't know if the everyday parent or student knows that. So some real tangible, simple things that we can include in our communication would be really helpful because then I know at least that's the trigger, that's a lever. But I think we can do a much better job also addressing the fears and the concerns of our students, particularly at the high school level.
It's great feedback.
Thank you.
Does anybody have anything else? All right. So the next thing on the agenda is future resolutions for board consideration. I sent out to everybody on, I'd say Monday morning you would have gotten it, a draft resolution for safe storage of firearms. And Ms. Christiansen is going to discuss this because she was the one who brought it forward.
Yes, thank you, President McQuine. So I, you know, want to bring this forward for discussion for a full board in light of, you know, the events that happened at Oxford and certainly, you know, our lockdown that happened even in our high schools this past month. A draft resolution about safe storage of firearms... A draft resolution about safe storage of firearms, really about sharing information for parents and community members about the importance of, of securing firearms in, in homes and talking about gun safety with their students. So I, as Ms. McQuine mentioned, there's a draft resolution that was sent to the board that, you know, would like to open up for conversation and discussion about whether or not we'd want to consider that.
Very much so.
Um, so this is because there is not a law in Michigan.
Uh huh, correct.
There have been, I believe some are being introduced or have been introduced just recently. I believe Representative Perry is doing one. Who is the representative for Canton? And then there's one being introduced in the State Senate by a woman who is wanting to be the State Senator for Plymouth. Because now, of course, with the new masks, Plymouth and Canton will be split into separate State Senate districts.
So what we have to, what would be the process if we have concurrence with the board on this? Would this be something we bring forward in the future as a formal resolution?
Yeah, we would just do it next month, next, next meeting.
Next board meeting, not next month, right?
Yeah, next meeting, get an action item for it and then just pass it.
I'm in support of that.
And then we, I would suggest at the same time that we could send it to our elected representatives. Because when they do introduce that kind of legislation, if they have support from their community, it's valuable. There have been multiple school boards that have adopted these resolutions in the wake of the Oxford shooting. Does anybody have any questions? All right, seeing none, then we will bring this forward next time. Thank you so much, Ms. Christensen.
Thank you.
Um, next up is future agenda topics. Does anybody have any future agenda topics?
I do want to share that we had originally planned for Alice training updates, as well as an update on emergency operating plans this evening. And we had to move that right now. It's tentatively at the next meeting and if not the next meeting, the first meeting in February. So I'll just keep you posted when we're going to be able to share that information.
All right. And then the next thing is follow-up board questions from our last meeting, which was in December. So the board would like to receive enrollment numbers for the high school honors, international relations and Western civilization courses, those came in board notes. Um, the board would like to know how long it would take to move to virtual learning platform, should it become necessary? Did you get that?
I believe you got that. That was actually Sean's question.
Yeah. I thought you also had a question.
About it.
I mean, I wanted to know, but it was Sean's question specifically.
And then the board requested Superintendent Merritt to seek ways to further promote the availability of vaccinations.
I shared those, uh, Mr. Brennan and team created some visuals that we have, put them up at all the schools, just trying to really encourage vaccinations. And also continuing for us to partner with the Health Department and provide additional vaccination clinics. We, I'm going to probably get the numbers wrong, but we gave over, administered over 400 vaccinations at our clinic last week. We have signed up for additional clinic and that will take place next month. So we'll communicate, and they're trying to align that around when boosters now that they're available for younger around that time period. So we'll communicate when that will take place.
Monica, towards that end, can we take advantage of some of our new communication mechanisms, whether they be robocalls or the text messages to let people know about that program? Because I think that we did a good job of, you know, publishing it, but it didn't feel like we were actually promoting it. And I think if we can take advantage of some of those activities to just do that, I think it will help increase or continue to increase the numbers of the vaccinations. We know, even in looking at the new guidance that we have, there's almost, other than masks, there's no requirements for people that are vaccinated from a close contact or anything else. So vaccination is our number one great, number one protection mechanism. Masks are number two. And the sooner we can get people vaccinated and reduce the, the number of cases, then the sooner we can get into a more normal situation.
So you may be talking about like the, the text capacity, we can talk about different ways to push out?
Ways that we can actively promote it, to sell it. You know, we've done a good job of informing, but I think that we need to take it to the next level of, of actual promotion.
Sounds good, thank you.
All right, anything else? All right, so we have come to the end of our agenda and it will be adjourning. I do want to make a note that we are going to have a special meeting on the dynamic plan discussion that will not be taped, but people are more than welcome to stay for that. The dynamic plan is like the plan that will be driving our district for the next several years. So that will be a good discussion. So we are, it is 9:18, we are adjourned. And we will take a few minutes so that if people do not want to stay, they can leave and anybody else can get up and walk around for a few minutes. So thank you very much.